Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Barr, for leading through the pledge of allegiance. Good evening and welcome to the March 8, 2021 study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,917th regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, March 22, 2021. We have all members of the council with us this evening. And the only announcement I have to make this evening is we have a request from the petitioner to remove item number 12 from the study agenda, so we will be removing that agenda item. Does the council, does anyone on the council have any announcements to make? All right, seeing none, we will go to audience communication. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to communicate with the council on any item not in this evening's study agenda to do so. Going once, going twice, last call. All right, we will move ahead then with our meeting. Tonight's meeting is, this meeting is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken this evening. However, the council members will offer either one resolution or sometimes a combination of resolutions for each item. Resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the benefit and for the benefit and information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Monday, March 22, 2021, what they will officially be voted upon. And you may hear council members offer with an approving resolution on a non-controversial item that it be placed on the consent agenda. The consent agenda at a regular meeting is where we vote on all items that were deemed not to be controversial and were requested to be put on the consent agenda with no objections by any council member to be placed on that agenda. If any council member objects to an item being placed on the consent agenda, that council member simply requested it be placed on the regular agenda for a full discussion at the next regular council meeting. If you would like to participate, any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please use, if you are on Zoom, the raise hand button or press star nine on your phone when the item is called and you will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. When you are called on, please state your name and address for the record so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes for this meeting. It will also let the television audience and the council members know who is speaking to them. And with that, we will move ahead with our, with our meeting. Beginning with new business, item number one, is a request to extend waiver use approval to a new owner, Richard George, for, Richard George, for Hussein Zane of Zag Motors regarding petition 2014-08-02-19 to operate a used auto dealership, Lang Auto Sales, with outdoor display vehicles located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Merriman Road and Melbourne Avenue 30805 and 30835 Plymouth Road in the northwest quarter of Section 35, this is council resolution 20-15. And we have the petitioner with us this evening. We're looking for Mr. Richard George. And I know that the notification was sent, let's see, attendees, there we go. See a hand up? I'm looking for the, okay. Looks like we have two hands up. I will go first to Mr. Hussein Zane.
Yes.
Mr. Zane, good evening.
Good evening, too.
Did you, would you like to give us some background on your request here?
Yes, I'm the founder of Zag Motor. It's a used auto group in Washington State that was established in 2005. I, it's still in business and I relocated here in 2019.
Mr. Zane, we're getting, we're getting a lot of feedback. I don't know, if you're on speakerphone, you can take it off.
Okay, how about now?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, okay, I apologize about that.
No problem.
So yes, was still in business in Washington State, in the Seattle area. And I relocated here two years ago. Currently, I live in Canton. And I came to, I've been in the search for a location for luxury vehicles such as, imported and luxury vehicles such as Range Rover, Mercedes, Audi, BMW, and Tesla. What got my attention with this location is a large indoor showroom for the Tesla market since it's electric cars. And the street fits the criteria that we look for, for a successful car dealership. And we find it very classy and it does meet what we're looking for as far as area requirements and type of city, et cetera, for, for the type of vehicle we're looking to introduce in the market here.
All right, thank you. I don't know if Mr. George would also like to speak before I go to council. Mr. Jolly, did you wish to speak now or would you like me to go ahead to Mr. George?
Yeah, Mr. George, speak.
Okay. Let's see. Good evening, Mr. George. Let's see.
Hello?
Mr. George?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I can't hear you guys.
Yes, we can.
Well, we can hear you.
It's your voice, you can speak.
Hello?
Hello, now can you hear us?
Okay, I'm having a hard time hearing, but go ahead.
Well, no, we just wanted to hear from you if you had anything to, that you wanted to add to the council.
I, I do, I just stay there. I do. My name is Richard George. I've worked in the city since 1969. My, in my quest to find a qualified person to run the business, because of number one, my age, I need to retire, I have health issues, and my special needs son needs more attention. So in my quest to retire, I, I was able to work with Hussein here who is in business and sells quality cars. And I was hoping that with your help, we could get him approved. And we, he and I worked out a program where I could liquidate my inventory inside of 30805 Plymouth Road while he would be able to operate out of 30835 Plymouth Road, which is the building in front. And then for one year, I would do a going out of business sale. And then in January, February of next year, 2022, I would hand the building over to him and we would relinquish our license with the city of Livonia. So that's our plan, we're hoping you'll look favorably upon it.
All right, Councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair to Mr. Termina, can you provide us some additional information here? I'm looking at the hackett and I've.
I can't hear.
Well, you, I know you can't hear, we, we're not sure what your technical issues are, so we're just, you're, you're just gonna have to do your best. Councilmember Barr is, is not asking you a question, he's asking our legal department.
I believe I, okay, Mr. Termina?
I'm sorry, not Barr, a Jolly, sorry.
Okay. Mr. Termina, I'm looking at Google Maps here, I'm trying to figure out exactly what this property is and what the status is and what we're talking about here.
So this is the American.
Yeah, I'd love to have your insight here.
I'm sorry.
I'd love to have your insight if you can kind of explain this from your perspective.
Sure, so this is the American Steel Motorcycle and before that, it was a grocery market. Goes way, way back. And this petition was filed in 2013, approved in, you know, I think either January or February of 2014. There were limitations, it was originally called Lang Autos. And the conditions imposed by council included a limit of 31 vehicles on the site. There could be repair services conducted within the building, but those would be limited to vehicles that were being offered for sale at this, so it was not to be a repair shop open to the public. There were other special requirements in terms of setbacks from the road as far as the display vehicles. The building that Rich is referring to, where it would, they would temporarily operate out of until the transition is complete, that was actually, I believe in Eco Wheels was the name of the company that was running out of that at the time it was approved. So it was approved in, in 2014 and then in 2015, the license was transferred over to, there was an extension and the license was transferred over to Rich. Rich has been operating a used car business in conjunction with his motorcycle sales business at that facility, not nearly to the capacity that it was originally approved. But the consideration today would, I think, recognize the, the right of the new owner, if it's approved, to go back to the original approval with 31 cars for sale and, you know, all the other limitations that were imposed by council resolution 2415 and 2514.
Okay, and the only follow-up I have is, looking at Google Maps and the street view that's provided on Google, it doesn't even look like this is really heavily operated. Is that true or am I looking at something that's outdated?
You're probably looking at something that's fairly accurate in terms of the, if you went out there today, it might not be too different. There's not many cars on the site. Much of the service activity and the vehicles for sale, which are mostly motorcycles and apparel and other accessories are in the inside of the store. In discussing this with, with Rich, he did indicate that, that he has had vehicles for sale on the lot periodically, just again, not nearly to the capacity that was approved. So he does maintain an active used B dealer's license at this address.
Okay.
We did check the, we did check the Michigan Department of State records and that has been the case now for many, many years, in fact.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, one last question. Do we check with Mr. Zane to see if he has the appropriate license before we transfer? Or is that something that would possibly come later on?
That would come later on, so if the waiver is approved, Mr. Zane would have to apply to the Michigan Department of State for the Class B used vehicle dealer license. We review that and approve it in terms of the municipality and zoning items and then it goes back to the state for final approval. So that, that occurs through the zoning approval, if that should be possible.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much.
At council. Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, Plymouth Road, being on it, just celebrated my 43rd anniversary in business last week on that road and there's been a lot of changes, a lot of ups and downs. I think we should be thankful that Mr. George, who's operated there, like you said, since what, 69, Richie? You know, has found someone to take over that business. That, that building, if you've been past it lately, sits way in the back, so it is hard to see and it's, you know, it needs some screws it up here and there. And perhaps with Mr. Zane coming in, that may happen because Mr. George has said he has some family responsibilities and some personal things he's got to take care of. So I would applaud that and I would say, let, let's give this gentleman his waiver use and a chance to, you know, put a shot in the arm. This business owner has been there and done a nice business for many years. Richie used to have a, wasn't it a party store, I believe, as well? And been a good taxpaying citizen for many years and business owner. So I applaud that and I think that I would like to offer an approving resolution to go forward with this waiver and, you know, enlighten of the situation as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. I too support this, I think it's a good idea to maybe sort of revitalize this successful business that's been a part a long time and you have a really motivated new owner that wants to take it to the next level. I do have a question for Mr. Termina through the chair. Mr. Termina, so the building to the north, the smaller building, will also be used as the business with the building to the south, which is the much larger building?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, that was what I was kind of confused on, that makes more sense. That was my only question, thank you, Mr. Termina.
All right. Are we, are you asking for that to be placed on the consent? Or regular? You're both muted. Councilmember Donovan, Councilmember Toy?
Sorry, I'm sorry. If that's appropriate, Madam Chair, yes, please.
Is there any, any objection placing that in the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, Mr. George and Mr. Zane, that will be placed on the consent agenda, which means you do not have to return as petitioners to the meeting on March 22. Thank you. Item number two is a request to extend waiver use approval to new owner Edmund Lung regarding petition 2014-10-02-14 submitted by Elite Foot Spa LLC to operate a massage establishment on property located in the southeast corner of Plymouth and Stark Roads, 34389 Plymouth Road in the northeast quarter of Section 33, Council Resolution 373-14. And a notification was sent to Mr. Edward Lung to attend this meeting. We have the petitioner with us this evening. Calling once, oh, let's see, there we go. Let me find, just saw him, now I can't find him. There we go.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Hello, my name is Edmund Leong, my address is.
I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name, Leong.
It's okay, it happens often. My address is 14331 Westlake, Taylor, Michigan. I'm here to seek your approval to operate a massage establishment. I believe that this type of massage or this type of service could be beneficial for the community, especially considering what we've been through within the past year with increased stress and anxiety, et cetera. Proper guidelines and sanitation procedures will definitely be emphasized. I'm also aware of human trafficking issues, that is something that I loathe. I speak highly against that all the time personally. And yeah, I've also spoken to the former tenant of this location and he has expressed that he is no longer interested in pursuing this, this type of establishment due to personal reasons. So yeah, this, I believe this will be a good opportunity to, to, to bring some relief and some, you know, to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Leong, Council, Vice President Barr?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Leong, do you have background in this type of business?
I do, I actually have family who have also established this type of business in the city of Livonia. They've been servicing the community for roughly 10 years now and have had no problems. They are grateful for your, your support in the relationship.
What, what businesses are those?
It's also another massage spa located at Five Mile and Newburgh.
What's the name of the business?
New Life Acupressure.
Okay, and are there others?
Not a massage spa, but I also have family that have established a business in Laurel Park Mall, like a noodle restaurant.
Okay, so, so the only other massage establishment or massage-related establishment is the New Life Acupressure at Five and Newburgh?
Correct.
And how long has that been there, roughly?
Roughly 10 years now.
Okay, have you been before us before?
I have not.
Okay, you're, I thought your name sounded familiar, that was the only reason I asked. So, um, so at this location, is this, are you taking over Elite Foot Spa? Or are you establishing your own business?
Yes, this, this, that is correct, this will be my business solely.
Okay, so it's, is it retaining the same name?
No, there'll be slight changes to the name.
Okay, but, but as far as employee base and operations and everything, you're just taking over the existing business?
Correct.
Okay, do you have an active role in New Life Acupressure?
I manage, I do the communications and all the emails and all that, you know, all the, all the boring stuff, you know, so.
But you don't own that place though, right?
No, I don't own that one, no.
So this is the first time that you're owning an establishment like this?
Correct.
Okay, and, and what, what did you say the relationship was of the New Life Acupressure for you?
Family, actually. Yeah, my mother, she's the owner of it.
Okay.
So I do have, I am quite somewhat familiar with this type of, you know, this type of arena, this environment, this type of massage service, so.
How did this particular business opportunity come to your attention?
It just, I crossed paths with the former tenant and he spoke about his personal reasons of wanting to, you know, of not wanting to continue anymore and I thought it was a good opportunity. I personally believe in massage therapy, I think it's very beneficial. But I know it doesn't, you know, work for everybody, but majority in cases, I think it's, it could be very relieving and relaxing for most people.
All right, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Leong, can you, listen, this is, this is a general industry question that I'm gonna ask you. Do you really find that there is an overwhelming demand for this type of service to the point where we would have to continue to offer waivers for more and more businesses like this? And I'm not asking you to put you on the spot here, but I noticed that we have quite a few of these that come before us quite often. And I'm curious if the demand is really what it appears to be by the amount of inquiries we get before us.
Yeah.
That's the first part, and the second part is, how do you plan on staffing one of these facilities? I'm just curious where all the employees come from and all of these separate locations in the industry. I know you, they're not all yours, but just out of curiosity, where would you hire the people from?
Right.
In terms of their credentials and that sort of thing?
Right. Personally, based on what I've researched, I see that this type of industry is increasing, the demand is increasing, that's just based on my research. And when it comes to employees, I do have like social media and, and those types of resources to contact licensed massage therapists. I'm, you know, we will, it will be, foot massages will heavily be emphasized at this location. But also full body massages as well. And I know licensed massage therapists will be heavily emphasized. And, and social media, you know, I do have connections to, to seek people and, and employees through social media. So I don't find, I don't think that'll be difficult when it comes to the employees and licensed massage therapists.
Do you find with your mother's establishment that there is such a demand that she does not have the capacity to provide all the services that are wanted from her, from her business?
Yes, I personally believe that the demand is high enough to cater to, you know, to the increased numbers of demand.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Councilmember McCullough?
Madam President, through the chair to the petitioner, you did mention a licensed massage therapist. Who would be holding the license in this establishment?
When it comes to massage, the massage therapy licenses? I have two therapists in mind and they are licensed. Would you like me to provide their names or?
No, I mean, well, I guess a follow-up question, would they, are, I guess the question is, is any of the ones that you're looking at, are they part of the current establishment? Or is it someone new working?
One of them will be, they are, they are part of the current establishment. They are licensed, I believe, I believe their service is very exceptional. So yeah.
If it's possible, I don't know if this is something that we could recommend, obviously, for the next meeting? To have some more backup and information?
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sir, if I may, to, um, what are your hours like in this? Would you propose in this establishment?
Hours would range from 9:00 AM to probably 9:00 PM.
Seven days a week?
Yeah.
So, okay. Okay, um, along those lines of questioning in regards to your employees, you have two current employees that will stay? Is that what I hear you saying or is?
Yeah, at least one for sure. Yeah.
And how many, how many employees would you have on staff then for a nine-to-nine? Operation to?
At first, in my mind, probably three, three to four.
Okay, currently, what, what type of massage does he do? Is it more foot?
Yeah, that will be emphasized of the foot reflexology massage. Yeah.
But you'll do others, you'll do back?
Yes, correct.
Okay, the Swedish type, do you think?
Yeah, deep tissue Swedish, acupressure, yeah.
Okay, and would you, are you a hands-on licensed massage therapist?
I am certified as a massage therapist apprentice, so I do have some experience. So.
And how long have you been in the business per se or been practicing in the business?
Roughly 10 years, I've been around.
Okay, all righty. I think that Councilman McCullough has asked for a little bit more information, so I'd like to place this on the regular both ways, if we may.
Well, we haven't, I don't think we've had, oh, we got a resolution offered.
Okay, that's whatever.
Councilmember McCullough, did I miss that? Did you offer a resolution?
I think Councilwoman Toy just did.
Yeah. Yeah, I offered it both ways, if I may, Madam Chair, on a regular. I was only saying Councilman McCullough because he was asking for some more information.
Okay, so you would like to offer an approving and a denying resolution?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Barr or Vice President Barr?
Yeah, thanks for indulging me, Madam President. Mr. Leong, just a couple more questions that I don't think I asked you earlier. What, what will be your day-to-day role in this business?
Basically, managing the communications with the customers, making sure the relationship is, you know, up to par, everyone satisfied. Yeah.
Is, is this going to be your primary business and is this?
Yes, yeah.
All right, thanks, I'm all set.
All right, so we have both an approving and denying resolution offered for the regular agenda. Mr. Leong, I think you've heard that some additional information is requested. You can contact the council office if you'd like some additional details about perhaps what the council is looking for. But we will ask you to come back and join us at the regular meeting at 7:00 PM on Monday, March 22, 2021.
All right.
All right?
Sounds good.
Thank you for your time this evening. Item number three is a request for authorization to purchase 12 marked semi-marked patrol vehicles and unmarked police vehicles utilizing the state of Michigan and McComb Consortium. Bid pricing, this comes from the Department of Police, budgeted funds. Good evening. Good evening, LPD, and I think, I think I'm looking for Captain Grosso.
Madam President, can you hear me?
Captain Grosso, yes, we can hear you, good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Madam President and council members. This is a request for the authorization to purchase 12 marked semi-marked and unmarked vehicles for this year. And as you know, it's pursuant, we're hoping for a waiver of the sealed bid process. As always, we go through the consortiums. This year, we're going to use the state of Michigan consortium and the McComb County Consortium to make these purchases. And as you see, five of these are marked and semi-marked. And as you see, five of these are marked and semi-marked vehicles for the uniform division. Four are unmarked for the intelligence division and three are unmarked for the investigator divisions. And I, uh, will say this also, the, uh, the cost is well under budget. Part of that is due to the fact of the condition of our fleet right now, which is a no smart, small part due to our vehicle maintenance coordinator and his assistants and our officers who are taking very good care of the vehicles. We're very happy with the fleet right now, but as you know, we have to rotate out vehicles every year. And this is, uh, this is all from budgeted funds. So you have the packages. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer if I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, uh, councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, first, it's always good to have, uh, a, a good Catholic central man before us to come through items like this.
Thank you, Councilman.
E- everything looks in order, um, and I'm in supportive of this, I'm happy to support it. Uh, this is an odd question and it's not a overly serious question, but, uh, through the years, we've seen that the police vehicles that we've had have been marked in different ways. Do you anticipate that these marked vehicles will continue to be marked as they currently are with the same designs and the same coloring and the same logos and all that kind of stuff? Or do you foresee that that would be changing anytime in the near future?
Very good question, Councilman. Uh, that subject has been broached, it has been a number of years now. I don't think it's the longest time we've gone with any one logo. We really do like this particular logo. Our officers like it, I think the public likes it. Um, but always we're looking to, to see if we can be better, look better and all those good things and, and present a, uh, a good presence in the community through our scout cars. So we have been discussing that. Uh, nothing, nothing planned yet, maybe not this year, maybe not next year, but soon.
Thank you, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with the way to look at the moment, but I'm sure there's a lot of, uh, children in Livonia who'd be interested to see some kind of changes or to know some changes were coming. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, councilmember Jolly, you wanted to place that on the consent?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right. Um, that'll be placed on the consent, so you do not have to come back, uh, to discuss that item, uh, Captain, on the 22nd, although you know, we always like to have you join us. Um, item number four is a request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and purchase from a sole source provider. This comes to us from the Division of Police to upgrade the Viper 911 intrado system from budgeted funds. And I hope I pronounced it correctly. Captain Borowski, are you going to speak to this item as well?
Thank you, Madam President, I am. And I think you pronounced it well. Uh, this is the upgrade to our 911 system, which you know is essential to us protecting the community and in our communication with the community at crisis times. This current system is, uh, six years old, uh, and past recommended life. This is, uh, will be an upgrade to the hardware and the software. And as you see in the package, it will also include seven-year maintenance plan with intrado viper. They are the sole source provider for this. They've been our vendor the past seven years. We're very happy with their work and that's why we're asking for the waiver of the, uh, sealed bid process. Uh, any questions, I'd be happy to answer if I can.
Council? Uh, Vice President Barr?
Yeah, I was just gonna offer approving for consent on this, if there was no objection.
All right.
I, I think Councilwoman Toy had her hand up though, Madam President. I don't know if you saw that.
Uh, Council, Councilman?
No, I, I support Councilman Barr, that's great. That's what it's been offering, thank you.
All right, all right, uh, Captain Borowski, thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, love you too, thank you.
Item number five is a word of bid that's come to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation for the construction of outfield fencing at Four Ball Diamonds located at Bicentennial Park from budgeted funds.
Hi there, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everybody, thank you, Council President, thank you, council members. My name's Ethan Engel, I am the athletic coordinator with Livonia Parks and Recreation. I see a few faces I recognize from the bootball tournament. I hope you guys enjoyed that one. Um, this project is for Bicentennial Park for four diamonds. Simply adding outfield fencing of six feet to those diamonds, not only adding value to the park, but adding value to the user experience. It is our most highly requested park. I am constantly running out of space to put teams out there, both from Livonia and from outside of Livonia. So I would propose to council award the bid to the Future Fence Company out of Warren, called the references and they came back with great reviews and would always hire again. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Engel, council, uh, councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President, uh, I'll offer an approving for consent. Uh, it's always a good opportunity to, uh, provide positive feedback and kudos when deserved. Ethan is one of the absolute champs of the Parks and Rec Department. He's a valued city employee and he does a great job, uh, whether it be from organizing a bootball tournament. There was a great success or, you know, organizing T-ball leagues for our, our younger residents. Uh, all around, great guy and we're happy to have him, thank you, Ethan.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly.
Uh, Vice President Barr? You're muted, you're muted.
Yep. Uh, no issue with it, I do have one question for Ethan. Ethan, can you just clarify for me which diamonds this is? I was looking through the pack and I'm sure it's there, I just wasn't seeing it.
So it's diamonds five, six, nine, and 10. Seven, eight are, are the two that overlap in between. Those are the two we aren't fencing for, for a couple of different reasons. But five, six, nine, and 10 all back up to some woods or back up to a path, uh, and are farther outside there.
Okay, five, six, nine, and 10, you said?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, and we have that on consent, correct? All right, thank you. Moving on to item number six, this is an award of bid, also come to us from the Parks and Recreation, a removal and replacement of lap, pool, decking gutters and drains from budgeted funds. I, uh, good evening, uh, I think we?
Hi.
Good evening, Ms. Menugian.
Hi, good evening, everybody, yes, um, we are looking at, um.
And, and Stephanie, just for the benefit of everyone, could you please introduce yourself?
Yeah, sorry.
I think that's what knows you are, but just to make sure everyone knows.
Yes, I'm Stephanie Menugian, aquatics coordinator for the Parks and Recreation Department. And we are looking for approval to, um, from budgeted funds for, um, our deck removal and with the new coating and to replace the gutters and drain the lap. So this, um, project will add, sorry, there's a lot of feedback coming off from my end. Um, there's a, to match the aesthetic of the leisure pool.
Stephanie, we're having a hard time hearing you, are you on speaker?
No, I'm on my computer and I'm getting a lot of.
Okay.
So I'm trying to, is that better?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I think my fan on the computer was a little loud, sorry. Um, so what we're looking to do is match the aesthetic of the leisure pool and kind of carry over that color scheme. This type of flooring is going to provide, um, it's not going to be the same type of flooring that we used in the leisure pool. This is going to be a concrete coating. Done and, um, will, will look a little bit more seamless compared to the, to the PVC flooring that we had in the leisure pool.
Uh, councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I, I spend and have spent the vast majority of Saturdays since we have been able to open up the rec center again at swim lessons, both in the leisure pool and the lap pool. And it is noticeable how much the deck, the decking on the lap pool side is in need of replacement. I think everything's in good order in terms of the proposal here. Uh, I would, you know, it would be a, a missed opportunity if I didn't compliment Stephanie and her people and, uh, the entire aquatics team at the rec center as well. Uh, they're doing a fabulous job, um, all the way around and it's a great experience as well. They deserve a lot of credit, uh, and I'm happy to support this on consent, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly.
Uh, thank you. Any objections placed on the on consent? All right, seeing none, uh, we will go ahead with item number seven. Uh, this is an award of contract coming us, coming to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation regarding the Greenmead Master Plan from budgeted funds. And I, I know there was some question as to whether the, these, this is from budgeted funds or this was, um, anyway, I'll, I'll let Mr. Davis, um, handle that. Good evening, Ted.
Thank you, Council President Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. They had to call in the B team for this one, unfortunately, after a couple of all-stars took the, the first two items. Um, and I'm very thankful for Stephanie and Ethan and all their hard work. Uh, we are looking to award the Greenmead Master Plan project, uh, to Wade Trim. Uh, this was a, a project that was undertaken with the planning assistance of the Planning Department along with our Historic Commission and Parks and Recreation staff. Uh, we were lucky enough to have a, a large and diverse steering committee that weighed in on these interviews. We did interview, um, I'm blanking now, I believe, five firms that day. It kinda, or, it was five firms, four? Was it four? All right, four, four firms, thank you, councilmembers Jolly and Barr. Um, that's where the visual cues come in, so I appreciate that. We did interview four firms for this project. Wade came out of that process, Wade Trim being our, our, chose our preferred vendor for this. Uh, we're looking forward to great product. Part of this, this project was talked about, uh, prior to budget or during the budget process. It was not budgeted. We have moved around some money in our Parks and Recreation capital projects list. And we have also solicited funds from the Historic Trust Fund with the approval of the Historic Commission. So we do have sufficient funds for this project, but it was not a budgeted project, even though it was discussed prior to the budget being finalized. I'd be happy to answer any questions Council might have on this.
Uh, councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so Councilman Barr, Councilman McCullough, myself, some representatives from the Historical Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission, along with the appropriate staffers, uh, did spend, uh, the better part of a Friday a few weeks ago, hearing the four proposals. Uh, the reason that I, I believe Wade Trim is an appropriate choice here is because they really provided us with an effort to fully utilize the site while, uh, making it engaging, but also really recognizing and enhancing the historical significance and how we utilize it as well. Uh, one of the things that was kind of setting Wade Trim apart was the fact that they went so far as to include a historical archivist on their team to help us with, um, not only the buildings themselves, but kind of put together a cataloging system and to kind of recognize what we need of what we have out there. Um, not of the buildings themselves, but rather the channels, the smaller possessions inside the buildings to fully display the history and to also put together a policy that would kind of direct what we accept in terms of donations and what we look for, uh, out of donations going forward as well. It was just really all together, well-run, uh, uh, proposal that they put forth. Uh, we had some other good proposals as well, but I believe this was the best one. It, it was a, a great effort led, uh, by Mr. Davis. And I think this is really the next step in terms of fully utilizing Greenmead for what it is and what it can be. And this does not, this isn't really anything that's gonna, you know, change a whole lot in terms of what we're accomplishing, other than making it more engaging, more usable and kind of really shoring up what we have out there and having a plan to do so. Thank you.
Councilmember McCullough?
Madam President, another thing to touch base on, pretty much everything that Councilmember Jolly said was in line with, uh, a lot of the sentiments that I, uh, wrote down, especially being part of the steering committee. Another thing that Wade Trim really, uh, that, that jumped out was the community engagement factor. Um, they're gonna be using a lot of the budget, I know, was to really, uh, figure out, uh, what the community wants to see with the site. I'm super pumped up about seeing this go through. Greenmead is Livonia's, you know, secret place that, uh, has all the possibilities. Um, and I know coming out of this, this will have the professional direction to really take Greenmead to the next level. So it's exciting time, uh, thank you, everybody involved and, uh, hopefully looking forward to getting this plan underway.
Uh, councilmember Toy?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I'd just like to thank, uh, the three of you that were involved and, and all the other folks as well. This is long overdue, um, you know, this site is a jewel in our community and really needs to be, you know, shown, shined up, if you will, a bit more. And I think with this kind of effort, it will be, and, uh, I look forward to hearing about it, seeing it and, uh, seeing it be very successful. Thanks for all the work you guys have done on it, appreciate it.
Uh, I, I have a, I have a question, please. Uh, let's see, I think I will direct this to Mr. Davis. Does the master plan get into the level of detail of how historical accuracy is, is, um, is defined and, uh, observed at Greenmead? And, you know, the Christmas light display was a huge success, got a lot of great feedback. Um, I did get a considerable number of phone calls from people who did not feel that the decorations were consistent with the, uh, historical aspects of Greenmead. So to what level of, of detail regarding that, you know, again, hewing to the historical, uh, historical nature of Greenmead is the master plan going to get into?
That's a good question, Council President. Uh, you know, I think they're gonna guide, Wade Trim, I expect to guide a process through which, you know, commissions, whether it be historic preservation, historical commission, along with residents, kind of, you know, steer, uh, where they want to see programming and where they want to see amenities that are appropriate at that park. Uh, certainly, I don't think anyone would recommend a carnival there. But there are a number of activities and things that go on at a park that not, that are not historically accurate. We drive cars there. That wasn't historically accurate for the village. Um, I mean, I think it depends on where you want to draw a line. And that's probably more of a policy type decision as opposed to a master planning type decision. You know, I think if we're so rigid in our dogma of only historically accurate things can be there, we're gonna be very limited in what we can do. Um, you know, certainly, we want to respect the history that Greenmead represents. Uh, but at the same time, we do want to bring it to life and showcase that facility for, for younger generations and families to enjoy. Um, so there's gonna have to be a little bit of, of flexibility in our mindset, I believe. But yes, I, I do believe Wade Trim will help us identify appropriate events and activities for that site.
All right, that, that's helpful. And, you know, I, I hear a lot from, uh, from my colleagues and from Parks and Rec about wanting this to be very much like Greenfield Village. And as you know, you know, Greenfield Village does work very hard to hew to things that are keeping with the period of the village. And, you know, we're not gonna put candles, Greenfield Village doesn't put lit candles on Christmas trees because obviously, uh, there's a tremendous danger there. So you do make adjustments, of course, for safety and, you know, practicality. Uh, to your point, we're not gonna require people to ride horses and, uh, walk and ride the old-fashioned giant wheel bicycles to Greenmead. But, you know, I, I do think as we move forward with that, it is important for us to think about, um, what, what we're trying to do with the historical aspects of Greenmead. Because we do have a lot of other areas in the city and parks where we don't have those sorts of, um, you know, the, it, it's not a historical site, right? So anyway, thank you, that's very helpful.
You're welcome.
All right, so we have that on the consent agenda. And again, thank you to the council members who gave up an entire day of interviews and joining Mr. Jolly and members from the other commissions. It was, you know, extremely helpful and I think very beneficial to the citizens and to all your colleagues to have the three of you involved in the, in the interviews. So thank you, and thank you, Ted, for heading that up. All right, item number eight is a request to approve the Alliance of Rouge, Rouge Communities ARC Annual Assessment for 2021. This comes to us from the Public Service Division in the amount of $36,296 from budgeted funds. Uh, is that Mr. Moore, the almost birthday boy?
Yes, it is, it's Doug Moore.
Good evening, Doug.
Department of Public Works, good evening, Council President. Council, this is another of our annual items that we bring each year. Uh, it's our dues to the Alliance of Rouge Communities. As you know, Livonia's was one of the founding members of the ARC. The ARC represents almost all of the municipal entities that make up the Rouge River watershed. Uh, they help us do with our MS4 permit, apply for grants, do all of the investigations that are required as part of our MS4 license. Again, the dues for this year are $36,296 and they're coming from budgeted funds. And if you have any questions, I'm available.
You always make yourself very available, Mr. Moore. Uh, Vice President Barr?
No questions, as he says, this is something we do annually. I'll offer this for, uh, approval for consent, if there's no objection.
I see no objections, we'll place that on consent, so Mr. Moore? So, Mr. Moore, you do not have to come back on the 22nd to talk to us about this issue, but, you know, we always like it when you come to London.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Council. I appreciate it.
And I did offer you a birthday greeting at the beginning of the regular meeting. So if you want to hear all the good things that were said about you, go, you can always catch the recording.
I will do that. Thank you.
So thanks for everything, Doug, and have a good birthday.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, thank you very much. All right, item number nine is an award of contract. This comes from the Engineering Division. For the 2021-2022 Sidewalk and Pavement Replacement Program, Water Main Breaks, this is contract 21F for a two-year contract. And is this Mr. Zalinsik?
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
City Councilmembers. Yes, this item before you is a bid that was taken back on February 9th, a two-year contract for water main breaks. Just a brief history, DPW goes out, they'll get a call for water main break, they'll fix that repair location, then we'll end up getting the information to Engineering Department, whether it's sidewalk, drive approach, asphalt approach, could be a commercial approach, part of the roadway, to go ahead and complete in two phases. First phase is usually done by July 1st, July 2nd, and the second phase is done in the fall by mid-October. So anything that was done from November last year through this portion, typically in May, June, we complete those repairs by July, and then the fall repairs. We had very competitive bids. We had nine people bid on the project. The amounts varied from $328,650 all the way up to $871,402. So you can see there's nine bidders, Phase 1 and Phase 2, a two-year contract. Luigi Fernandi and Sun Cement Company was the lowest bidder. We have not worked with them before. However, I did check on the references. They've worked in previous communities. I also checked with OHM, AEW, and HRC, who are other consultants we do business with that also had no issues at this time, appeared satisfactory, and their asphalt contractor was Brown Asphalt out of Pontiac, who's been in business for 40 years. At this time, we're asking your approval for that contractor, in amount for two-year contract of $326,000, I'm sorry, $328,650, and be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. I see that Councilmember White has her hand up. Councilmember White, we do have one of the, one of the contractors who bid on this who would like to speak. Would you like to speak first, or would you like?
No, that's fine. You can let that person speak.
All right, I see that we have Mr. Joe Rotundo with us this evening, and he has his hand up. Let's see, Mr. Rotundo, you should be able, we should be able to hear you now. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. This is Joe Rotundo. I live at 33135 Pickford in Livonia. I just wanted to comment a little bit about the bid for the water main break restoration. We're, we look like we're high on the bid, but when you break the bid down and take a good look at it, the four-inch concrete, six-inch concrete, and eight-inch concrete was substantially lower than Luigi. And we've done this contract a number of years. Last year, we did zero asphalt repair, and we come up a little bit higher than Luigi on the asphalt repair, but we're cheaper on 90% of the work that we normally do. I, we take a lot of pride in our work, and we do go over and above our contract, like replacing sprinkler lines that may be caught under the concrete that we see that are broke, so that they don't, you know, whoever replaces the sprinklers normally doesn't have to come, and we either remove our concrete to replace the lines or, or under the concrete. We try to do the best job we can for you, and we hope that you'll take a close look at these bids. And like I say, 90% of our work last year was four-inch, six-inch, and eight-inch concrete. And I want to thank you for letting me talk tonight, and I'm happy to be a resident of Livonia, and I really appreciate all the work you guys do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rotundo. All right, at this time, I don't see anyone else. I'll go back to Council. Council, Councilmember Toy, and then Vice President Barr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have an approving on this, or do we not?
We don't. We don't have any.
I'll offer an approving, and I would also like to say that I think Mr. Rotundo has done a great job for our city venue. His specialty seems to be sidewalks, and, and a very reputable country, company, and a very reputable family. And I think when we compare the bids, the cement is a bit less than the other bidders. Costs were to make up some of the seals and things that are going to have to be done with this unfortunate issue that we have before us. So I would encourage us to give a good nod to this bidder. He's had a lot of good faith in this community. He's a resident here.
That's for. Councilwoman Toy. What, what, what the City Engineering Department has asked us to do is to award the contract to Luigi's.
Oh, well, yeah, but I'm giving, I'm asking for approval for the Rotundo bid.
So, so then that would be a denying resolution.
Oh, pardon me. Yeah, it would be a denying. You're right, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, so you're asking, you're asking for a denying resolution for the, for the Luigi.
For the recommended bidder and going with the proven that are over many, many years in the community. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So we have a denying resolution offered by Councilmember Toy, and that's denying to the recommendation of the Engineering Department going with the lower Luigi's. Vice President.
I do have a question. I do have a question, but before we do that, I don't think we need a denying resolution. I mean, if she wants to offer an approving for Rotundo, I think she can just do that. There's nothing, I don't think we need to deny the recommendation.
Right. Ted, where's, where's Mr. Burner? Is that?
That's true. He can, you, it's in the Council's position right now on where you're going to go. So you can just do a resolution, or you can do, you can do denying and an approving, or just approving for.
Okay, thank you, and that's, that's because we're in a study. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, long night, long night for, just for me.
Okay, I did have a question for Mr. Zalinsik.
Wait, I'm sorry, Vice President Laura, Councilwoman.
Yes, ma'am.
I gave you, the President misdirected you, misguided you.
No problem.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution for Rotundo, for the bid to be given.
For their bid, yes, not that much, yep.
Okay, all right. Vice President Barr.
Yeah, so Todd, as we look through this, but I do understand what he's saying about the unit prices being less than the concrete, and yet there's a lot of these unit prices that are more, and in some cases significantly more. And can you just help me understand a little more where, you know, the, when you put this out for bid, I know we're supposed to look at this from a unit price perspective, but obviously you've laid out the different types of work that may be involved and, and the bids have been compared based on the total price. Is the specs or the, that they've bid on, the quantities that they've bid on, is that what you anticipate being reflecting? Is that your best guess at what reality is going to be? Or is that just a benchmark that you use in order to compare bid?
So just to give you an idea how we figure out the quantities, basically, we take every two years, we see what happens in those instances. Obviously, the water main break should go down because we're putting more infrastructure into the city, correct, with our dwarf projects? So take last year's project, you know, Joe Rotundo was a contractor for last year. Look at the items, however, we don't know, like I said, it's like a win in the lottery. I don't know where water main break's going to happen. It could be on a roadway, which is a thick pavement, could be in a parking lot, could be residential. So we have to go to the best ability we can on the water main breaks, whether it's concrete, asphalt, or sidewalk itself. So best of my ability, we do it in-house, take those, those quantities, put them out to bid, and you see we had a very competitive bid, nine bidders. And so those quantities, like you said, some people bid the four- or six-inch, you know, Joe's prices were cheaper on those items, but again, the asphalt was a big difference on the between, the bid between Luigi's and Rotundo's, about a $3 difference. So all depends on where the water main break locations and quantities occur. But from our best ability, we put in Phase 1 quantities. We take half of those quantities for Phase 2, and then next year, I don't know what's going to happen, but I do do the best ability from the previous data to do the best specifications as tight as I can when I bid it out based on those quantities that everyone had bid on fairly.
Okay, thanks for explaining that again. And I certainly, you know, Mr. Rotundo obviously is well-known to the city, does great work, has a number of contracts. I'm sure we'll continue to have contracts and just appreciate his involvement in our city. But it's, you know, looking at this objectively, it's, it's hard to get past the $38,000 difference on this particular one. So I understand that there's a resolution out there for approving for Mr. Rotundo. I'm going to offer an approving for the, for the one recommended by the Engineering Department initially, and, you know, we've got, I'd like, we have competing resolutions, so it'll obviously stay in the regular, but like to use the next two weeks just to look into this a little bit further, because I understand Mr. Rotundo's points, but, you know, we establish quantities the way we do for a reason, and it's just, that's, that's a big enough gap that it's, it's hard for me to ignore that. So I'll put an approving out there as recommended. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So I agree with Councilman Barr. I think that it's worth looking at over the course of the next two weeks. I will say that I, as an individual, I feel uncomfortable sometimes when we consider going with the, with a high bidder, when that high bidder is not recommended by the department or the administration specifically. Not to say that there's anything particularly wrong with that, but I believe that we might be well-served to pay extra attention and give it more scrutiny if that is something that we're going to consider. We have two motions on the floor. I will look into the concerns expressed by Mr. Rotundo, and I also appreciate what Mr. Zalinsik has offered here tonight. I just believe it's kind of a delicate situation, and I cherish the bid process as, as I believe many of us do, most of, all of us do, to be honest. So I look forward to having this before us in two weeks, but it's worth considering. Thank you.
Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate all my colleagues' comments, et cetera. I, I only go back to when experience levels and, you know, work, quality work, et cetera. But I also go back to an old saying that I think was Buzz Armstrong said, as he goes up in the rocket over to moon, it's saying, Jeez-O Pizza Sign was built with low-bid rating specs. So there is, you know, there always is a thought about the low bidder. There's always a thought about the next bidder, or the next bidder. So I want to look at each of it, as you're saying, objectively, within the next few weeks, and hear both, both people out. This way, we have a little bit of an option and some room, and I respect the engineer and others' opinions on it, but that's why we're all elected, to look at things the way we're looking at them. So I appreciate all my colleagues' comments, and I would hope you keep an open mind as we go through this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. So we have approving and denying. I'm sorry, Mr. Zalinsik.
I'm all set, sorry.
No, I'm sorry. All right, so thank you, Mr. Rotundo, and thank you, Mr. Zalinsik, and we'll all do this again, look at this in two weeks. So thank you.
Council President. Just to clarify, you said we have an approving and denying. We actually have two approving.
I'm sorry. And again, I know it's been a long night for everyone.
No, I know it has. I know.
I'm writing a lot. You're absolutely correct, Mr. Burner, because I, whatever. After I corrected myself, after I corrected myself, we do have two approving resolutions. One for Luigi and the low bidder, and one for Rotundo. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Burner, for setting me straight on that and, and making the record reflect what we actually did, which is always a good idea. All right, number 10. This is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve proposed 2021 sidewalk repair program by extending contract 20G unit prices with Joe Rotundo Construction Corporation, and request to authorize appropriation and expenditure to Precision Concrete Incorporated. This comes from the Engineering Division for Contract 21G, which includes two target areas, one, one in Section 18, and the other along Merriman Road from School Craft to Five Mile Road, along with scattered locations throughout the city. This is Council Resolution 36-21. Mr. Zalinsik, you're up again.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, this is a request by City Council to extend the concrete unit prices from 20G, which Joe Rotundo was a low bidder at that time. Obviously, he does a great job for the sidewalk program. We're looking for his expertise and his quality workmanship for this program in the amount of $686,897.50. Again, we're, we're asking for a portion, $10,000 to be provided to pushing cutting to help grind out some of these areas in which the trees may have heaved up the sidewalk, but instead of replacing them, we can grind them down at a cheaper rate, instead of paying 175, 50 bucks. We can take care of those issues that may have came to reservice, you know, several years later. We're looking at single-out assessments in the amount of $182,179.92, which will be billed to the property owners. If you approve this tonight, we will send out a letter to the residents come mid-April to alert them of their estimate and requirements. They can either fix it themselves, hire a contractor, or have Joe Rotundo perform the work if approved. They have to June 4th to pick up their permit. If not, we'll have Rotundo Construction move forward, and hopefully by the end of August, complete the repairs, and the invoice for the repairs goes out by the Treasurers Office in early March for payment in 2022. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you want. Again, this is extending the concrete prices, waiving the formal bid process, and awarding the contract to Joe Rotundo with a few increase in unit prices with the concrete material cost and fuel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinsik. Mr. McCullough.
Madam President, obviously, Mr. Rotundo and Company have been doing the sidewalk program, I think, odds and on, or off and on since 2006, and has done a wonderful job. This is, you know, the holding the prices straightforward. I'd be happy offered an approving for consent. There are no objections.
Seeing no objections, we will place that on consent. So that one, we are all set for on the, on the March 22nd, on the consent agenda. All right, number 11 is, comes from the Planning Commission. This is a site plan petition regarding petition 2020-11-08-06, submitted by Leo Swali Building Company, Incorporated, to develop a site condominium in Roma Court, consisting of 32 single-family homes on the property located on the south side of Linden Avenue between Newburgh and Hicks Roads, 37855 Linden Avenue, and this is on the site of the former Webster Elementary School in the southeast quarter of Section 19. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam President. The site in question is in the process of being rezoned from PL Public Land to R1, one-family residential. Council gave first reading to the zoning change on September 28th. R1 is the proposed zoning, where the minimum lot size would be 7,200 square feet, lot width 60 feet, lot depth 120 feet. So as you can see from the aerial photograph, the site in question is surrounded by developed single-family homes, nearly all of which is also zoned R1, one-family residential. The proposed development shows a total of 32 lots. All 32 lots would comply with the R1 district requirements for a conventional lot size. As you can also see from this plan, the design includes a new street with a cul-de-sac that would extend south from Linden. That street would provide access to 22 of the 32 lots. Those are identified as units 11 through 32, and then lots 8, 9, and 10 in the northeast corner would have direct access to Linden. And then at the south end, lots or units 1 through 7 would have direct access on Mason Street. Along the east side of the project, you'll notice the large detention system that includes a forbay as well as a detention pond continuing south from that area. The open space park enlarges. So not only does this include the pond, the open space park include the pond, but it also includes other areas as well. A fully detailed landscape plan was submitted with the petition. It shows one tree per lot as required by ordinance. In addition, landscaping is shown around the detention basin and within the open space, open space park. The plans included, or the submittal included, the master. The plans included, or the supplemental included, the master deemed bylaws, which is very similar to what we reviewed in the past in terms of minimum house sizes, minimum percentage of brick on each of the, the units, and other building and use restrictions that are consistent with past projects. Planning Commission is recommending approval of the project as submitted to you this evening.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Terramina. Councilmember Barr.
Thank you, Madam President. So Mark, I see from my recollection of when we looked at this previously, when we did the zoning, I see they've already taken into account some of the things that we talked about, and I appreciate that. One of my concerns is, is elevation, and the reason for this is one of the previous developments that we've done in the last several years, yeah, I've gotten some, some complaints from people over there, from, from existing neighbors about the elevation of the new neighborhood, and I went over and looked at it, and it, it was a, it was a lesson learned for me. I'm sure, you know, Mark, I'm sure you're, you're familiar with these things and probably look at it, but that's just one aspect of these developments that I haven't paid enough attention to in the past. And in this one particular scenario, you know, the houses in the new neighborhoods were so high that the, the fences from the, the privacy fences that had previously existed in the existing homes were worthless, because the new homes were literally looking down into their backyards. So I'm just wondering, has that been looked at with this? And I, I did see that there was an elevation piece in the packet that was given us. What's been the conversation about that, and is that something we need to be concerned about here?
Sure, it, it, it was something that was discussed at planning commission level. In fact, they noted as part of their review that the design was, that was raising the grades of the property in a manner that, that you indicated. So through, through those discussions with the project engineer, the grades of this have been lowered three and a half feet. Additionally, where this, where the homes in this proposed development directly, lie directly adjacent to existing homes to the west, all of those homes were, I think, seven or eight of the lots along the west side, it's spelled out in the resolution, those are the, the developers committed to building only ranches. So not only have we lowered the grades on this property, but also restricted the, restricted the height of those homes to ranches. So this would be a, the cross-sectional relationship between the houses. And it might be a little tricky to read here, but the engineer is here, and he can describe the changes to the, the plan to address the planning commission's concern.
Okay, thank you, and I'm, I'm glad to know that it's been recognized and looked at, you, you beat me to it, which is great. Two remaining questions that maybe when, if the petitioner or the engineer wants to speak to this, he can, is number one, okay, so I know it's been addressed on that side, even though the ones on the east side do not directly abut the, the other homes, is there any risk of it being a concern there anyway? And then the second thing I was going to ask is, is it possible to get a, a rendering or a drawing that shows what the sightlines would be from the new homes into the backyards of the old homes? I seem to recall seeing a drawing like that, I think it was for the medical center at Five Mile, and who knows how long ago that's been, but, whatever it was, I, I seem to recall seeing drawings like that, where we can show the sightlines, and if it's possible to provide something like that, that'd be great.
Well, that's exactly what this cross-section is intended to do, so it might not be as, as illustrative as, as what you are referring to, what's been done in, in other projects, but we asked the engineer to provide this drawing to, to show exactly the, the relationship between the existing homes there on Nola Street with the proposed homes on the west side of, of the cul-de-sac. And while there is a height differential, you'll, you'll see here, the, again, it's, it's much less than what was originally proposed. I think there's reasons for these grades for drainage reason, for drainage purposes, and I'll let the, the engineer get into that, whether or not it can be lowered additionally is, is, is a question that you'd have to ask him. And then in terms of on the east side, the, it's, the only difference, the, the grade has been lowered throughout the, the project site, as it affects the finished floor elevations of, of the homes. The only difference here will be that the, the Colonials and Capes will be allowed on the, on this side of the street, because there is a greater distance, a greater separation between the homes, the, the proposed homes and the existing homes.
Okay, and then final question for you, Mark, is that, I've got it on my own file here, but I'll, I'm looking on your screen now, that kind of darkened area right at the base of the cul-de-sac, that it almost looks like it's a pathway going to the detention space? Well, there's that too, where you are there, I was actually looking from the new road to the detention up there. So yes, that, that section you're on now is, is part of it, and then if you go up, and I'll go to the left, there's a dark area right there, that, that, and then where you were earlier, are those intended to be like access pathways of some kind, or?
Yeah, they're, they're primarily in the design to allow for equipment to access the, the pond for maintenance purposes. And what this pattern illustrates is a grass paver blocks. So it would be grass on top, but there would be a, a base beneath it that would support equipment that could get back to the, to the pond in order to maintain it. So that's, that's what these areas are illustrating. These are illustrating additional easements that provide access to the basin, but the, the main one would really occur here off of Mason Street for any heavy equipment that would ever have to get back there for, for maintenance purposes.
So the, so they're not pathways and like that easement you talked about, I mean, that's part of someone's yard, it's just, it's just noting a, an easement for the city to have access to.
These are, these are mostly easements, that's correct. This would be part of the open space area.
Okay. Thanks, I, it's not uncommon when we do these, that somebody also have a creative idea that I probably like, but overall, I, I think this meets what I was looking for, and I think it'll be a good development. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. I, through the chair, Mr. Terramina, I, I guess this is more of a statement of just, with this, I, I don't have the full, you know, I know it's hard to see, I've got it zoomed in here, but with these new developments, we are requiring these properties to maintain their stormwater for rear lot drainage, am I correct on that?
Yeah, so the engineer again can, can speak to this, but any drainage would be directed to swells and to collect, catch basins that would then carry the water off without going onto the adjacent property, so yes.
And would you know, with, with our current neighbors, you know, the neighboring properties, you know, I know obviously a lot of these sites were, the, the existing neighborhoods were built, you know, primarily fif, late 50s, early 60s, and the 70s, rear lot drainage would not have been a feature that would have been required during those times, correct?
More than likely, they, there, there are catch basins that run along the, the rear of those properties as well, but I think this, this development would be mostly self-sufficient in terms of its, its drainage, it wouldn't rely, I don't believe, on those catch basins in those adjacent, in the adjacent subdivisions, but I'll let the design engineer and maybe Mr. Zalinsik respond to that.
Thank you, I mean, and, and obviously, I definitely want to hear from the engineer. I'm just concerned with that grade, it's just such a, a high slope that, you know, if, if a neighboring property does not have that type of drainage setup, or if something is, you know, clogged from all the years, last thing I want to see, and I think the last thing that these homeowners want to see, is their, their lots get, you know, basically in the swamp, so I'm listening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Terramina. With that, would we like to go to petitioner or Mr. Zalinsik? I, I see that Mr. Orlando is on, and I think Mr. Suave is on too. I don't know who would like to address, who would like to address this question, let's see, trying to figure out who has his hand up.
Mr. Khalil, who's raised his hand.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. All right, let's go, there we go, oh, there we go, Mr. Khalil?
Yes.
Okay, there you go, oh, we're having some conflicting, but, okay, there we go, Mr. Khalil.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and thank you for staying that late. And first thing, I want to address the elevation issue, the way Mr. Terramina said, we tried to lower, like he asked us to lower the, the elevations, and we lowered it as much as possible. Now from that property line, we're going almost the minimum slope that we can go from the west property line to the lots, and then to the street. So we lowered it, this is, I mean, we can, if, if, if we're going to work with it, it's like half a foot, six, it's inches, it's nothing more than that. So that's, we did what we can with that one, and we lowered it by like three and a half feet. On the east side, I don't think there is any issue, just because we have all the space and all the distance, and the street, like control the elevations around it. So this is about the elevations. Second, regarding the drainage, we are controlling everything within our site, like we have swales all around that's gonna collect any water, no water's gonna go into, into, into adjacent properties, it's all controlled, we have like sway line on the west side, and everything on the east side is sloping towards the detention basin and towards the open space area. And I think that's, that, that, these are the two points that I wanted to clarify. If you have any other questions, I'm here, if you have specific question.
Mr. McCullough, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair to Mr. Terramina, and maybe Mr. Zalinsik, when, I, I like what I hear about having these stormwater managed from the site. Do we require, I'm assuming we require through the process of construction on preliminary grades, or do we, before they move on to any process, or do we not?
I'm gonna let Todd answer that.
What happens is, when we, when we actually review the site for final approval, we make sure that there's a meeting in our standards for backyard drainage every 400 feet, the detention that's there, we ask for an exhibit for the future maintenance of that, that pond. In addition, like you said, our, our goal is to not have the adjacent properties have drainage onto them itself, but it's all contained on the site. If you look, Mr. Suave's been doing these developments, we did Dover recently and Capri with no issues with the drainage itself, so I don't anticipate any concerns, and we'll make sure when we do in the review process that that's addressed, obviously during the, during the final review plan. But the grade cert is for each individual lot, so when, overall development totality, developer like Leo Suave comes in, we have an overall soil erosion and segmentation control plan with the detention pond, look to get that established early on, and then as we go through each lot, there's a grade certificate that's given, and then refunded the $750 bond it's taken, and then obviously released at the, at the end, when all the stormtours are cleaned out, and detention pond has its establishment, we give that bond back.
Perfect, thank you, and, you know, and, and I think that's just, and thank you for going through that, Mr. Zalinsik, because I think it can just rest assured that all these processes are in place to ensure that, you know, the stormwater and engineering's all up to date, so thank you for that clarification.
All right, vice president Barr. You're muted.
Just kidding, man, it's been a long time without doing that, now I've done it three times in two meetings. One, one more question on the sightline, saying, Mr. Khalil, can you just give me, my, my, here, my question about sightlines just comes down to this, is the people on Nola Street, were, were the houses, were the houses of this new development be low enough that the people on Nola Street don't have a direct sightline into the first floor windows?
That's a good question, I mean.
You maybe aren't prepared to answer that tonight, but that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the difference between our floor elevation and their floor elevation, based on what we have, it's like four feet.
Okay, and it's probably okay, I just, and I, sorry, I should have clarified that even further. What I'm picturing is just if someone has a normal, what is it, a six-foot privacy fence, I just don't want a situation where the, the first floor of these new homes is staring down into their backyard, which is what we have in another neighborhood right now, one of the new neighborhoods, and I think from that cross-section you sent, that's probably not the case, but there's anything that you can mock up that shows that, or just give me the extra assurance, and I think the resonance over there. Other than that, I don't have any issues, I'll offer an approving for this for regular. And then the only other thing I'd ask is if there's any way that, you know, there can be a monument put up there for, you know, here is where Scott Barr in 1991 threw a touchdown pass right as the recess bell rang, it's one of my finest hours, but I don't know if that was in the plan at all, but I'm all set, thanks.
All right, I like that idea. All right, we have that, going to the regular agenda for the 22nd. Do we have anyone from the audience who would like to, anyone else who'd like to comment on this? All right, seeing none. I, I'm sorry, Councilmember Toy.
I'm sorry, I'd like to make Scott Barr's comment there at the end part of the resolution. Only joking.
I, I don't.
All right, we will not make that part, and I will not require that that's where my oldest son David won the science fair either, so there you go. We'll stand down on our, on our, what do you call it, vanity, vanity signs. All right. With that, we will go on to number 12, but we won't, because that came off of the, that was, we are honoring the petitioner's request to remove this from the agenda, so we will go on to item number 13. This is a vacating petition coming to us from the planning commission, petition 2021-01-03-01, submitted by Anderson, Xine, and Westrick, Incorporated, behalf of Botsford General Hospital, to determine whether or not to vacate an existing public utility easement at 39000 Seven Mile Road, located on the north side of Seven Mile Road between the I-275-96 Expressway and Hagerty Road in the southwest quarter of section 6. Mr. Terramina. You're muted.
So this is a rather, it's, it's a housekeeping issue, mostly it involves a vacation of the water main easement, this is a site of the Beaumont outpatient care center, as you know, with the demolition of the old building, some of the easements are no longer needed, and so this is simply a vacating of, of one of those easements.
All right, Councilmember Toy, you'd like to offer that for approval on the, on the consent?
Yes, please. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Before we go back to audience communication, I just wanted to let everyone know, we just got a Nixol advisory, I know we only have very few residents other than us left on the call, advisory from the police department, there are water main breaks in the following areas, Six Mile and Merriman, Harrison, and West Chicago, and Hubbard in Ohio. We have brown water reported, and there is no ETA for repair to those, so I'm gonna be a long night for our DPW department. All right, back to the audience, if anyone would like to communicate with the council on any item not in this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so, and finally, I will say a special hello to Mr. John Gresbek, who I see has been with us this evening, and does great work on a number of our commissions, including the, the Greenleaf Commission on Sustainability, so thanks for being with us, Mr. Gresbek. All right, we have nothing else, we are adjourned at 10:05. Thank you, KC, Livonia Information Services, thank you, Livonia TV, everybody have a good night, thank you.